The time is about 1:06. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Mr. Jones. Ms. Turner.
Present.
Mr. Hauser. Mr. Hauser is absent at the moment. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry is absent at the moment. Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schlepper.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Council President Miller.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And the next item on our agenda is public comment. Has anybody signed in?
Cotty Taylor? Or I'm sorry, is it Corey? Corey Taylor, I apologize.
Good afternoon, County President Miller and members of council. I'm Corey Taylor, CEO of Frontline Service. I'm urging you to protect the full funding 2026 and '27 for the North Point Transitional Housing Program. It's a vital part of Cuyahoga County's Strategic Action Plan for Homelessness and is now at risk of disappearing. On a single night, 1,629 Cuyahoga County residents are homeless, and 180, 11% are unsheltered due to shrinking shelter capacity. In 2024, North Point provided housing and employment services for 250 individuals, including 113 young adults. North Point is one of a full continuum of housing programs that Frontline Service provides, supporting individuals at every stage of recovery, from street outreach to permanent supportive housing. North Point provides short-term housing for adults who are employment-ready and need a safe, supportive environment to get back on their feet. One-third of those beds are reserved for young adults, who are a very vulnerable population. By offering housing and job readiness supports, we help residents stop the cycle of crisis, move towards stable, independent, and permanent housing. North Point directly is advancing the county's own strategic action plan for homelessness and helps to meet their goal of reducing 25% homelessness by 2027. We meet with the county's five priorities every day in North Point. We have low-barrier access. We provide dignified crisis housing. We connect people with jobs and benefits. We free up scarce shelter resources. And we help people move to long-term stability. Yet, in this proposal by Executive Chris Ronain, the North Point program was eliminated completely. Eliminating North Point means higher shelter costs, slower progress on the county's own strategic goals, and more individuals unhoused next year. Restored funding means preserving stability, safety, and opportunity for our neighbors who just need a safe place to restart. Please, I respectfully request that you restore funding to North Point in the 2027, '26, and '27 budget. Thank you.
Jennifer Johnson.
Council President Miller, members of council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jennifer Johnson, Executive Director of Canopy Child Advocacy Center, and I am joined today by many supporters of Canopy in the audience. I am here to speak today on behalf of the children whose voices are the hardest to hear often. Since its launch in 2023, the Child Protection Team has helped hundreds of Cuyahoga County's most vulnerable children, those suffering from severe physical abuse and neglect, receiving timely, expert, and compassionate care. The Child Protection Team brings together our hospitals, child welfare professionals, and law enforcement under one united, trauma-informed response so that children are protected for the first time, and so no child ever has to relive their pain, to be believed. I know that there have been questions about earlier underspending. I want to be clear that that was never about a lack of demand, but about the deliberate, careful work required to build something this specialized and sustainable. We were starting up a new countywide model, one that required specialized medical leadership, including a pediatrician who can identify child abuse. From a medical perspective, formal agreements among three major health systems, and new shared protocols for referrals, data, and evidence collection. That foundation has now been built, and the team is fully operational, actively serving children every day. What was once infrastructure building has become life-saving work, and the county's investment is now producing exactly what it was intended to: better protection and care for our most vulnerable children. This is exactly the moment when the investment begins to pay off for children and for the county. These are not statistics. These are children in our own community. Just last week, our county was shaken by the heartbreaking case of a five-year-old girl who was brutally hurt by other children. When tragedies like this occur, the Child Protection Team is the team that steps in quietly but urgently, examining, documenting, comforting, and making sure that the child's path to safety and healing begins right away. Every child deserves to be seen, heard, and protected. I ask that you continue to stand with us to ensure that no child in Cuyahoga County is left without expert care and protection they deserve. Thank you.
David Crampton.
My name is David Crampton. I've been appointed to the Cuyahoga County Division of Child and Family Services Advisory Board since 2019. I'm a member of the faculty of the Jack Joseph and Morton Mandell School of Applied Social Sciences. And I'm coming today to ask you to fully support the Child Protection Team. When I was hired by Case Western in 2002, the expectation was I would work closely with Division of Children and Family Services, which I have, and I know Councilmember Miller remembers my contributions to the Partnering for Family Success effort, for example. So when I arrived in Cleveland, I had some experience in child welfare, but I needed to learn about Cuyahoga County. And I soon learned that Cuyahoga County didn't have a Child Protection Team, unlike every major city in Ohio, maybe the country, I don't know. And when I asked, like, "Why don't you have a Child Protection Team?", that's like really important. They say, "Well, it's because Metro has their own, UH has their own, Clinic has their own." So fortunately, my colleague Gabriella Celeste was able to get those hospitals in a room and say, "This doesn't make sense. We need to concentrate our efforts." And she got them to agree to one model, and with support of the county, Canopy was built. But as Jennifer just alluded to, Lolly McDavid decided to retire, so there was a bump in the road in terms of finding a pediatrician who can do this kind of work. There aren't many of them, but they found one, they got going. And so I think it's really important that we keep this going, that we demonstrate its In September of '23, Shaker Heights Police arrived at a house on the 3,000 block of Ludgate Road to discover four children who said, "Our father just shot our mother," and here we are. So Shaker Police, I'm pleased they knew to do this. They knew to take the children to Canopy, where they could be assessed, and then placed with relatives. So I've seen it in my own community. I live in Shaker. It's really important that we have this so that we can best serve the children of Cuyahoga County, and I urge you to fully fund the Child Protection Team. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Hauser is in attendance. Shawna Gurley.
Good afternoon, Council President, Vice President, and members of the county council. My name is Shawna Gurley. I am the Director of Emergency Housing Services with Frontline Service. I'm here to speak about the impact and future of the North Point Transitional Housing Program. Frontline Service has operated North Point since 2008, providing short-term emergency housing and helping unhoused individuals, from young adults to seniors, transition to permanent homes and stable employment. The building on Superior Avenue has aged and is in significant need of repair. But in many ways, it's also reflected the condition of those who've entered the program, those individuals arriving in a survival mode, seeking safety, stability, and a chance to rebuild. And just as the building stood despite its wear, our staff also has stood firm in their commitment to serve compassion, serve with compassion, dignity, and purpose. I just want to provide an example of one resident that came to North Point fleeing domestic violence abuse. As a transgender woman, her safety was paramount. Staff respected her identity, offered her a private room, and connected her to therapy and employment support. Today, she lives independently and works in a social service program, helping others who are also unhoused, a powerful testament to what North Point has made possible. While the building now requires substantial attention, the spirit of North Point program remains strong. We remain rooted in resilience, compassion, and legacy of life-changing services. At North Point, everybody is somebody. We respectfully ask that you continue to fund, support, continue funding to rebuilding the North Point program, a true gemstone to our continuum of care for the last 17 years. With your support, we can restore the beacon of hope and ensure that it continues to turn crisis into opportunity for our now-again neighbors. Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon.
I was honored to attend the 10 o'clock committee meeting, which was Community Development and Housing Committee meetings. Here, we already hear, if our budget cannot even sustain our current, for example, homeless services, then you definitely can imagine there will be more people beyond the street. And also, I mentioned at the 10 o'clock meeting that we already have some people, right now, they have to go through housing courts in different cities inside of a county because earlier this year, we had a federal funding hold. So CMHA couldn't really pay their rent on time. Do we want all the people already got housed to be unhoused again? Do we want the people who currently have housing never enter the homeless service systems to speed up their process to come in for the horrible very first time? There are lots of things we can do with our budget in order to support our valuable, precious health and human services. Homeless services is just only one of the examples. Programs for children, protect children. The program supports seniors, small or home repairing, any of those counts. Instead of spending the money on something most of people actually cannot even enjoy, cannot even go to participate, I'm talking about Brown Stadiums or county jail, the new county jail. Money should go to our important services, health and human services. Thank you very much.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Simon is in attendance as well. Michelle Rose.
Thanks for having me. My name is Michelle Rose. I'm the CEO at Greater Cleveland Works, which is the Workforce Development Board serving Cleveland and Cuyahoga County, a board that is appointed by the city and the county. Our mission is to deliver impactful workforce services to job seekers and businesses. And one thing we do is operate the Ohio Means Job Center at 1910 Carnegie, please come visit anytime, where we provide these employment and training services for residents. I am here today to talk about the CCEAP program, which stands for the Cuyahoga County Employment Assistance Program. And what it is, is it's scholarship funding for our job seekers who are not otherwise income-eligible for our more common grants, and it serves as last-mile funding so that someone can upscale and achieve the next level of certification or degree so that they can fill an open job in our community. The proposal before you proposes to reduce our typical $500,000 amount by 50% in the first year and eliminates it in the second year. We appreciate that the county has had to make tough decisions, and everyone here is worthy of keeping their funding. My goal is to make sure that you're familiar with this important county initiative and consider preserving it at some level. consider preserving it at some level. It has helped people in our community attain a commercial driver's license so that they can work closer to home for higher wages. Maurice, a single father who lives in this county, recently used this funding for that purpose. We have another story about a woman named Michelle who used it, who was already working as an RN and fulfilled her lifelong dream of getting her bachelor's in nursing and continues to serve this community's healthcare needs. So again, really important program. I'm happy to talk more about it anytime, and I appreciate your consideration of preserving it at some level. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. And it is now time for me to turn the gavel over to Councilwoman Turner, the Chairperson of the Finance and Budgeting Committee, who will conduct our second in these budget hearings.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the item until the record?
Resolution 2025-0293, adopting the 2026-2027 Biennial Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As Chair of the Finance and Budgeting Committee, I want to first thank my colleagues, our administration, and the dedicated staff of the Department of the Health and Human Services for joining us today. Today marks the beginning of our 2026-2027 biennial budget hearings. And this is where the real work begins, where the numbers meet values and where policy meets people. We'll begin our discussions with the Department of Health and Human Services. A few areas of county government have greater impact on the lives of our residents, from protecting children and supporting families to assisting seniors, ensuring access to behavioral health services, and strengthening the safety net for our most vulnerable. HHS represents both the heart and the conscience of Cuyahoga County. I wish I could say that this will be an easy process. It will not. We are facing difficult fiscal realities. Millions of dollars in needs and not nearly enough resources to meet them all. There will be tough decisions ahead, and I don't take that lightly. Cuts are painful, especially when they affect programs that serve people who can least afford to lose that support. My commitment as Chair is to ensure that this process remains transparent, thoughtful, and honest, even when the outcomes themselves may not feel fair to those most vulnerable. Because the truth is, this process will not be fair to anyone. Some programs that save lives will face reductions, and some people who rely on us most will feel those cuts the deepest. But honestly, but honesty and accountability are the least we owe them. Transparency is the promise I can make that every dollar, every line item, that every decision will be examined with care has been examined with care, compassion, and conscience. Our goal is to not just balance a budget, it is to balance our priorities with both discipline and heart. My hope is that we emerge from this process not only with a balanced budget, but with a shared understanding of what is meant to lead with integrity and empathy and sustainability. With that, we'll begin today's hearing with an overview from Director David Merriman, followed by presentations from the divisions within Health and Human Services. Director Merriman, welcome, and thank you for being here. You may begin with you already.
Thank you. First, I'd like to, first, David Merriman here on behalf of County Executive Chris Ronaine and the Cuyahoga County Department of Health and Human Services. First, I want to thank you for your introductory remarks and for kicking off this process by recognizing this is where policy meets people. Your comment about the heart and conscience of the county is not lost on me, but the challenge is for us to lead with integrity, and we are leading. And I agree with you, none of us want to be here cutting programs and services that we know matter in our community. However, we have an obligation to bring forward a budget that will enable us to maintain the balance of our human service safety net, and that's what we're going to present today. I'd like to start by thanking Kathy Starks, and Kathy is here in the audience in the back in blue. Kathy is the Fiscal Officer of the Department of Health and Human Services. She spent countless hours working on this budget with the departments and with the Office of Budget and Management, OBM, Walter and his team. And so much of what we're here today to talk about has passed through her office, but I also want to share with you, the presentation you'll see today was developed by the Department of Health and Human Service leadership. I asked each and every one of the directors, tell me how you would manage this moment, what you would do. Tell me what you think you can live with and what you can live without. And every one of them came back with very, very, very difficult action items that they felt were necessary for us to be able to maintain our budget. This is the challenge of being in leadership, and I acknowledge and salute them all for stepping into that role and doing the work that is necessary. One last point. This format is a format that we've done in terms of using a single PowerPoint presentation based upon the presentation provided by OBM. So I'm going to start us with an introduction, and then at the end of each section, I will turn it over to the next director. And in that way, we'll have one PowerPoint that's in front of you. If there are any errors, those errors are mine. I'll let the directors correct them. There'll be time for each of them to answer questions. And we're also happy to take questions offline and share information in the future. So I'd like to start by just recognizing this is the Health and Human Service Fund. And there is, you know, I think a moment here where we should recognize in a difficult budget, in a difficult time, how generous the residents of Cuyahoga County are and how grateful we are for them to entrust us with tax dollars. We take that very seriously. Yes, there are times that we want our programs to improve. Yes, there are times we could do better. But I would say, by and large, we work to maximize our resources and, as you said, focus on people. Helping seniors eat, helping children live, helping families get to work, helping the homeless find homes. That is the work that we do, and we do that with the levy revenue that is provided to us, as well as significant federal and state dollars. As you'll see through the coming slides, our budget is over $200 million, but with federal and state resources, we actually have over $400 million in revenue that we bring in and we utilize to maintain the safety net. The hard decisions we've made, and we'll talk about here today, will still ensure that that safety net is in place in '26 and '27, and that we will try to maximize all of those federal and state dollars as they become available. For today, I'd like to focus, for me, on the director's office. For folks that don't know, there are eight divisions within Health and Human Services. Each of those directors will be presenting. The first four will present today, the next four will present next week. There is an office of the director, for which I am also responsible, that has its own budget. That budget of roughly $22 million enables us to provide both the administrative services that are necessary, and I'll talk about those in a second, as well as to staff our human resource and information technology departments, and then charge, whenever possible, those staff to federal and state resources as well. We try to maximize every local dollar by drawing in federal dollars wherever possible. So our budget is largely made up of three areas: the staff, contracts, and then charge-back costs. For staff, there are 18 staff in the office of director, 15 staff in human resources, and 36 staff in IT. Those staff, the IT staff, manage both applications as well as network. The contracts that we have are primarily in two areas. The common applications include things like the cell phone chargebacks and other broad county strategies such as in-for, in leases, I'm sorry, our portions of in-for. Broad initiatives include programs like the AIDS Funding Collaborative and MedWorks that are not specific to one organization but serve the general public. Lastly, chargebacks includes the space that we have that is generally maintained by public works, either directly through staff, such as their custodial and their facilities maintenance team, or in cases where there's a lease, and we're being charged the lease, and there are outside staff in a leased facility. Security is largely provided by the Sheriff's Office, they're partners of ours, the PSOs that work in our building keep us safe, and are, I think, a valued partner. Our leadership team involves the eight primary silos that I referenced: Job and Family Services, Children's Services, Senior Services, and Child Support are the direct service arms of our organization. And then there is the Office of Early Childhood, Family Children First Council, the Office of Reentry and Homeless Services. And there are some direct service staff that are also in reentry and Family Children First Council. In the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the HHS Shared Service Team. That team makes up the back office administrative functions. Many of those staff are actually part of the departments listed above, but the functions that they provide include the budget and finance, the contract administration, such as preparing contracts and procurements, our communications and community engagement team, how we do our reach to the community, the information technology work that involves both applications and networks, the legal team, and then human resources. Those teams at the bottom right largely have no budget, they're listed in the budgets of the above departments. So the major strategic considerations that I'd like to talk about today. First is the federal and state policy changes. I think you'll hear a lot about this from Kevin Gowan, but it is fairly well-understood that the one big beautiful bill will have a dramatic impact on our budget, our services, and the safety net. Kevin will be available to answer questions on that. But those changes will impact every one of our programs. What we'll start to see is families that are no longer on SNAP will be showing up for food assistance at hunger centers. Our concern becomes families that could be ineligible for Medicaid or have Medicaid co-pays might be in need of other county emergency assistance. We expect the federal policy changes to have an impact on every one of our programs and are tracking it and going to be engaging directly with the community in response. We're also still awaiting the state of Ohio's response to the one big beautiful bill and the other policy changes. At this time, we should recognize the government shutdown has delayed a lot of our notices. So there are grants that we would have waited or we would have expected to get now that we're still waiting on. Policy changes, we're very open. We do not know how this will play out. We expect it will have a negative policy impact on us, and that could, in fact, lead to budget adjustments as well. Over the next two years, we'll be involved in many of our collective bargaining agreements. I saw Gail Elmer come in, so I know that some of our collective bargaining partners are here today, and we work closely with them, providing the direct services that this county counts on. We're involved with buildings modernization. We are actually modernizing both the, or we will be modernizing the Virgil Brown Building, as well as will be part of the 1801 Superior Building that's coming up, that will have a pretty significant impact on how we work over the next two years. And then I think the last part I do want to just recognize is our nonprofit partnerships. Much of the work that we do, we do in partnership with organizations that are frequently in the communities that we're trying to serve. Our contracting, our shared services, and our partnerships enable us to get to that final quarter mile of where many of our residents live. They're valuable to us. I think the partnerships will sustain, they will still be there even through these tough cuts, but we will be working with those nonprofits to do what they can to help us make it through a very difficult time. Last thing I want to just stop on is, I understood that Walter Parfeyowicz, in his October 13th presentation, left several items where there may have been questions. I'd like to, I'll pause in a second to see if I can answer any of the questions that were presented that day. I have a couple of budget updates that I would like to share, and then just talk about next steps. I think the first update I want to share is there is, I think, a statement in his presentation about the fatherhood program being reduced $80,000 and then $160,000 between the two programs. It should be $80,000 both days, or I'm sorry, both years. Again, if there are any errors, those errors are on me. I also want to speak to, we will continue to monitor what's going on with the federal and the state government. These changes are coming fast and furious, so we expect to be making adjustments both in our budget as well as our programs. And we will be working with council. We see you as our partners. We'll make sure that our committee chair, Vice President Conwell, is in the loop on the changes. And as we see strategic threats come our way, we will be speaking with council to let you know about it. I also want to just recognize that we are applying for grants as we speak on a daily basis. We're always pursuing additional funding opportunities, both local and state and national. We are open to restructuring. We've taken a look at a lot of our internal services and asked, are there other ways for us to do the services that we're doing that could potentially improve or save funds, save resources? And we'll be working with our vendors to do much the same. Many of our vendors receive cuts across multiple programs, and that is a nature of working with us when you have contracts from two or three different departments. And we understand that those cuts are painful, so we will sit with them to speak about what they can do or if there are ways for us to balance some of those adjustments across And I'd like to pause here and just see if there are questions on my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Merriman. Is there any questions at this time? Councilman Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Director, how are you?
Doing okay, thank you.
I know it's a tough time for you. Just two quick ones. With the HHS levy fund budget, I see with '26 and '27, do you know what '24 and '25 was, if I can compare?
I don't have that in front of me. I can give it to you.
It's just for me, when I'm doing my due diligence. And can I get a list of the nonprofit partners and what cuts they are getting detailed out so I can have a familiarity with what those are?
I believe that list was provided in Walter's October 13th presentation, but I'll send it to you.
Thanks for giving me a little shot, but I deserved it. Thank you very much.
Councilman Jones?
Dave, I was just curious. Obviously, we know this budget cycle, things are tighter, but I was curious with the HHS projected revenues, recommended revenues, how has that number arrived at? Is that something that just comes from property taxes, just a hard number? Or is it a number that you have to, as a team, come up with? Give me some insight in how that, how we arrived at that.
I'll invite Walter, if he wants to speak to this matter as well. But I would say, we don't do the revenue projections. That's information that's done by the fiscal office.
Good afternoon. Walter Parfeyowicz from the Budget Office. Through the chair, the councilman, those are property taxes, so it's the millage associated with the property taxes. As you know, we had some delinquency this year, which brought the number down slightly. But roughly, the Health and Human Services levies, they generate roughly $275, $276 million each year, and that's what we're budgeting.
HHS number is kind of just a factual number from property taxes?
Absolutely.
Total revenues is one that's...
It's all property tax-related for the levies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the Division of Children and Family Services, Director Jacqueline Fletcher. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Jacqueline Fletcher, Division of Children and Family Services. I will be presenting that budget. So I'll just begin briefly with, you know, one of the fundamental responsibilities of our county government, including our Division of Children and Family Services, is ensuring the safety, permanency, and well-being of the kids and the families we serve, and we do this every single day. So just jumping right into the budget overview, just wanted to just highlight, again, maybe starting from the rear of our recommended budget for '26, as you can see, is sitting at 172 mil, a little over, and then for '27, 170 mil. Again, reduction from what we're forecast for this year. And jumping right into some of the reductions, I know there was a question with some of the work we're doing here. As you can see, most of those reductions are coming by way of the client services, including our board and care, as well as the contracts and other professional services, and some of the additional work we added with our sheriff's deputies in the building. And I can touch upon some of that. And so within our strategic considerations... And so within our strategic considerations, again, not necessarily looking at new initiatives, but really our ongoing commitments here, really wanted to highlight some of the targeted investments we continue to focus on, including our front door. Again, this is where it all begins. When we get that call through our kids hotline, we will continue to lean heavily into our front door, understanding that we've seen significant improvements in how we're screening. Our accuracy rates improved by 9.5% through our group screening process, so we're pretty proud of that. We're also looking at, just wanted to highlight, from January to September of this year, we answered over 29,000 calls to our kids hotline, averaging about 124 calls a day and screened in over 6,500 referrals. Our new custody episodes, we're sitting at around 766 new custodies, just slightly above the same time period last year, where we saw 743 new custodies, but still lower than each year, beginning in 2020 through 2023. In 2020, we saw new custody episodes over 1,150. So we are trending in a good direction, and we want to continue to lean there. We also want to continue to focus on our kinship care and other least restrictive placement options. We know that whenever a child must be removed for their safety, being placed in out of home care, that's often, you know, we all know is traumatizing. But we also know they often do better. Those kids often do better, better when they're placed with their family, relatives, or even children can. So we will continue to lean into that space. We'll also continue to support our kids who show up with the most complex needs. We've talked about that population over the years. We want to identify those needs as quickly as we can, as early on as possible, continue to support them with the services and other resources in the most appropriate, least restrictive setting available. We're doing this through our partnerships with the state, through our daily, weekly interactions with DCY, Ohio Rise, our local providers and vendors, and of course, all of our families at the table. We also want to continue to expand our options for transition age youth. Again, this particular population is just near and dear to my heart. To Director Merriman's point, looking at grant opportunities, where possible, to infuse new resources and supports for this population, including our our young people with lived experience and our training for our caregivers and staff has been invaluable. We are just hearing such tremendous storytelling there, and they're seeing an impact in the way of resources and supports for for that population. So we'll continue to lean there. I also wanted to highlight, we've served over 9,000 kids this year. It's going to be critically important, and I'll just point back to all of our DCFS staff support that's in in the chambers today. It's going to be critically important to maintain our efforts to retain and support our workforce. That's going to be huge. And so ensuring that, again, the team has all the necessary tools to advance our mission, providing core professional development and training opportunities, our peer support teams that come in and support all of us through some of these tough case experience. We're going to continue to work very diligently with our human resource teams and others just to make sure we have a pulse on our workforce and make sure they're they're being supported. Again, it's through this work that we've seen an increase in our adoption finalizations. I'm very proud of that. And we've also seen improvements in our federal and state benchmarks. So those mandates that we're being graded on, again, I just left our state team who's in our building today, just really giving our team kudos for all of the improvements in our practice delivery. So again, we want to maintain those improvements for the safety of all of our kids in our community. And lastly, I just really wanted to point out that we're going to continue to be intentional with our community engagement efforts. This is really where we're going to continue to be elevating those values and voices of the community that we serve. It's going to be key and critical to the improvements we're seeing. We want to better understand our community's needs, to look at what's working, right? But also, where are the gaps, especially in these tough times? To partner with our community providers, some are in the room with us today, to bring those critical resources to their doorsteps. We really want to make sure we're getting out in force in our communities. Some of you were out with us earlier this year, late last year, as we were getting out there, so we want to do more of that, just to understand what folks are facing so that we can prepare those resources in advance for them and be ready to answer the call. And so with that, I can answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Director. Before we move further into questions, I want to just take a moment to recognize our Vice President, Councilwoman Yvonne Conwell, as Chair of the Health, Human Services and Asian Committees. She leads with both head and heart. She does this work every day, advocating for families, protecting our most vulnerable residents, and holding every agency to the highest standards of service and accountability. There's no doubt that she brings her tenacious love, her depth of experience, and unwavering commitment into every room, every meeting, and every policy debate. Her leadership and daily dedication deserves not only our respect, but our sincere gratitude. Thank you, Vice President Conwell, for the example you set and for the compassion and conviction you bring to this work. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for those words. Direct through the chair to the director. Let's go back to subsidy reductions. So most of those that are listed are contractual agreements outside agencies. The one, they all, I know words are very careful now, they're all concerning to me, but the most one that stands out is the sheriff deputies. OK? I'm concerned how this looks for our employee safety. So can, this is why, for the audience, we have really integrated paying sheriff deputies is because we've had a lot of cases and incidents where our employees have been hurt by youth, and we needed to incorporate that into our budget. So if you could help us, Director, with that?
Definitely. Thank you through the chair to council. That is honestly, when when I became director and we were experiencing upwards of 14-plus kiddos in our buildings, that was traumatizing for all of us, and many of us remember those times. Again, we've seen some significant improvements. It's not fixed, but we've seen some significant improvements. We are averaging less than two kids at any given day in our building. In many days, there are no kids in the building. Again, not fixed, but significant improvement. And I will say with this adjustment, we're really just going back to our normal staffing levels, our normal security staffing levels. We will still maintain 24/7 security in our county space.
OK, so?
Oh, and I'm sorry. Can I just say thank you to all of our security officers? I was with the Police Chiefs Association last week, thanking all of the chiefs for all of the work they've done. It is not without partnership that we've seen these reductions of of kids coming in. Again, the green cards that we offer, the resources to all of our law enforcement partners, they're using those resources. They're calling us ahead of time before they're dropping kids off. And so again, it's through partnership that we continue to see and experience these significant improvements.
So direct through the chair to the director, the $768,790, is that what it was costing in 2025 to have the partnership with the Sheriff's Department?
I am so sorry.
That is the subsidy reduction is 768.
Yes. I'm sorry, through the chair, that was adding five additional officers. We will still maintain the detective in the building that we've always had, so that's that same level of staffing level. I'm sorry, going back to the normal staffing level we've had prior to adding five additional officers for 24/7.
So to be clear, this budget will impact the five?
Yes.
But we will still have normal levels and security?
Absolutely.
Is there any way that, just in case we have a a child that needs some assistance, be able to pay on a as-needed basis with the Sheriff's Department in case there's a child that we we need to expand that, not on a on a full-term basis, but at least have? Are they willing to to work like that?
So we can definitely look into that. What we're doing now is because of the low volume of kids in the building, if there's no one in the building out of the five, we're typically just calling the sheriffs after hours, and they're dispatching someone to the building. So that's currently the operational space we're working in now, and I'm hoping we can continue to maintain that. But we can definitely check into, you know, should we need one or so officers dedicated, what the cost would be for that?
Question number two through the chair. On your strategic considerations, a question in regards to kinship care. Is the state still assisting with funding for this? Or are we, Cuyahoga County, funding at 100% now for the kinship care?
So through the chair, thank you for the question. The state is continuing to to pay to the tune of nearly a million dollars so far this year for kinship care in Cuyahoga County. And then the county is picking up, once those state funds run out, should there still be a need, we continue to support our kinship caregiver. So yes, the state is continuing to maintain that support.
And then, wasn't a question that I wrote down, but I think I saw something back in subsidy reductions in regards through the chair of boarding care. Now, that took a lot in the last six months or eight months that we worked on that. So I see some reductions of, can you explain these these deductions in 2026 and 27? Is that going to be based on out-of-town care? Is that where the the reductions are coming from? Are the savings, or I don't know?
So through the chair, one of the areas that we've been working on is, as you know, we may have to add a vendor to that master contract off-contract, so using that alternative procurement process. So we're really looking at that mechanism to hopefully reduce the level of providers we have coming in off-contract, because that can be a significant expense. And so again, trying to make sure, once we get to this point, which this current master agreement runs through March of '26, that we get everything out to all of the vendors to consider and have a set number of providers providing the care we need for the kids that are coming in, and so we can maybe reduce the number that will be coming in off-contract.
OK.
If that makes sense.
So there may be, for us to be clear, there may be in 2027, since we'll be in a new RFP and all that, reduce the number of providers that we that we currently use?
That could be a possibility. Can't guarantee it, but yes. But we're also looking at, again, through some of the other coordinated efforts, if we can locate the best possible placement for youth that's least restrictive, that's not out of town, that's not residential. Again, that will be in the best interest of most of our kids, as well as some cost-saving there. So we'll continue to look at that. We'll continue to look at increasing our revenue. I know there was a revenue question, so we'll continue to look at opportunities. We've started to look at daycare. We're learning we can find, we can get some revenue from the state for our daycare. Kids are replaced through foster care and daycare, as well as what we're spending on clothing vouchers. So we'll continue to try and see if we can draw down some increased revenue that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. General Lady from District 11?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have questions regarding impact of the subsidy reductions. I think just to qualify it that way, I want to start with Say Yes to education. I see that there's anticipated proposed reduction in Say Yes through College Now, 400, 600. And that program is for family support specialists, and I know there's other funders for the program, including CMSD and Cleveland. So what impact will this reduction have on the family support specialists?
So thank you for the question through the chair. This this adjustment really follows some of their own transitional efforts that they've started this past summer. And again, looking at, they're now positioning some of the family support specialists across multiple schools, which I think is going to be helpful. But then we've also started to look at, we've expanded the referrals to include some of our elementary-age kids, and we're still finding that we have roughly 250 kids in care in the district that would be impacted here versus the 3,500 kids we know CMSD is serving. So it's still going to be less than 1% of the population. So we do believe that this adjustment is in line with some of their transition.
Fantastic. And we were informed about their own reduction and consolidation.
Absolutely.
Program. The next one is the Canopy Child Protection Team, the 500. What, we had someone speak to this and just wanted to ask you the impact from your perspective.
So again, here is a necessary partner in the work that we do, again, collaborating very timely on all of the resources we are all providing for our kids. We really took a hard look at spending. And again, I understand there there may have been some challenges with program development and the build-out for that program, but we've seen a steady sort of referral source going over to the Child Advocacy Center. And again, some underspending over the last two years, so we were able to right-size that budget to fit the current operational space. Believe we've sent over 400 referrals for the Canopy support. And so again, we just truly believe right now in our space of shrinking budgets that this was an opportunity to, again, right-size, not leave money on the table. And we've saw that, and we've seen that, I'm sorry, with some of our other contracted services, our family center support services, we were leaving some money on the table there, so we were able to adjust and right-size that budget as well. And so again, tough conversations. I truly appreciate the spirit that we opened up this conversation with. This wasn't fun. None of these conversations I personally have had with executives and others around the adjustments, not necessarily easy, but necessary. And so, you know, I I understand the the concern.
And just two more questions, if I may. The neighborhood collaborative reduction, is that going to result in closing of some of the collaborative centers?
Through the chair, thank you for that question. You know, I've been here, I'm going on my 19th year, and I started with our neighborhood collaboratives as a partner through our system of care work. And again, a valuable resource and partner in the space that we're all working in. And I will tell you, as I answer that, through August of this year, there were 1,500 families in Cuyahoga County working with the various agencies. So I've had a meeting with the executives of all of our providers, just working through this budget so that they can continue to serve visitations, supports, referrals, providing those concrete services. And with this budget, again, we will continue to work with them in this space just to make sure that all of our services, all of the families are insured to receive that good quality care that they're receiving in the neighborhoods. So again, we'll just watch it. That contract currently runs through March of next year. And so we're giving them time to work with our teams and their teams to realign any necessary or critical services, but we truly believe nothing will be missed.
OK.
We do.
OK.
I can't promise anything in in terms of, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, although I wish I did, because we don't know what's coming through the front door. Although we're seeing reductions in the number of kids coming into care, again, the needs and... seeing reductions in the number of kids coming into care, again, the needs, and I know Director Merriman spoke to that, the needs remain high, the stress remains high. So, we want to continue to monitor that.
Yeah, my view on these collaboratives and these local places for people to go for frontline service is going to be essential right now. I mean, we're going to be hit with cataclysmic reductions in people's, you know, ability to pay their bills and provide for their family. It's a perfect storm. We're losing funding, and the demand is going to be out the door.
We'll continue to partner with them. When I talked about my community engagement focus, again, our collaboratives have been generous in hosting those community engagement forums. We'll continue to partner there, so that, again, the agency, the county, can understand where the needs are in each of the particular districts, so that, again, we could ready those resources and services and pivot where we need.
I know you will. Just lastly, Madam Chair, if I can, about your staff levels. I know that's critical to maintain the services. What's your perspective on this budget and maintaining the level of staffing that you need to provide for the community?
So, right now, I believe we will, with the vacancy credits, as well as, you know, looking at pay period 19, we were at 710. I think prior to that, we were looking at an authorized strength around 732. So, not a huge reduction. I did take a look at caseloads, which, again, is something that I have to continue to monitor, the quality. We are maintaining about a 12.6 average caseload size right now. I can say that is lower than where we were experiencing some of the highs of around 17, 18 cases. So, we'll continue to monitor that. I put that on there, just because as we lose people, I want to continue to track this, right? I want to make sure that, one, I understand the why, but also that they have all of the resources and tools to maintain, right? Whatever we can do, I know some of the exes that have recently gone out of the door have just pointed to the toughness of the work. It is a hard job. And we understand.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
And dedication. I trust what you need to do here. We'll maximize everybody.
We will find a way.
I know you will. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Gentlemen, Councilman Gallagher?
Welcome. I just have a question on the deputy sheriffs. They were in the old building where the kids were, and now the kids are moved to, the danger was the kids coming in the building. And the kids have been moved to...
So, through the chair, the question, we still have our primary county office, Jane and Hunter. And again, that's really where most of our drop-offs were happening. So, if law enforcement was engaging with a young person in the district, those kids were being dropped off at the building. That has reduced significantly. So, we still have our sheriff, who's dedicated to the building during the day, Monday through Friday, that's still happening. But again, we've seen a reduction in the number of kids coming to the building. So, we're not necessarily calling the sheriffs in to address any behaviors or other areas that we may see with those kids being dysregulated and things of that nature. They're still available, though. And so, this will be the shift of going back to our normal cadence.
So, you had five deputies, full-time, in the building, 24/7?
24/7.
Okay.
We were, I was told, and I can't qualify this, that we were one of 88 counties that did that, because of the volume and experience we were seeing with the kids in the building.
It was dangerous, and you had kids coming in off the street, not necessarily drop-offs, but walk-ins. You had some of these kids being prostituted. So, we had a big problem over there. Now, you're telling me there's no problem?
No. I'm not saying there's no problem. It's not fixed.
Call, if there is.
We call them.
You couldn't call before?
We could, but here was the problem. By the time they came in that response, we had a situation where somebody may have been injured, and we didn't want that. And so, we sat down with the sheriff's team and talked through, we're a 24/7 building. We really thought at that time, with the volume of kids in that space, that we needed a 24/7 response. We're still there, and we still have our protective service officers will be there, that will continue to run, as well as our deputy that's in the building now. So, we're not losing that deputy. We're maintaining that deputy that's in the building, as well as having access to the sheriff's deputies when we need it.
Right. You said that was a detective?
Detective, yes.
Okay. So, it's not a deputy, it's a detective from the sheriff?
From the sheriff, yes. He's partner with our staff for every, any incident that's happening. He's at all of our HHS buildings responding. Again, can I shout him out?
Mm-hmm.
Kevin, Detective Kevin Holmes. I'm thinking about Keith. So, no, definitely, we're continuing to partner in this space. And again, this has just been a hard thing to contend with, because I know it was traumatizing, and it continues to be traumatizing. Please hear me, it's not fixed by any stretch of the imagination. It's not fixed.
I think we all agree. You got one of the worst jobs.
Oh, no.
And your, you know, your angel wings are showing. So...
Sorry, can I just jump on one point, if I may? I want to, one, say it's detective, it's Keith and Holmes. But I also want to acknowledge, it's not five deputies at a time, it's a rotation of five deputies, just so that there's a deputy available.
Right.
At any given hour. And I think part of what Jackie was saying is, there were weekends where we had no kids, and we're still paying for that deputy that whole weekend. And I think that's some of what we're trying to change.
Better safe than sorry. The 768, 790 each year, that's coming out of your budget to the sheriff?
Yes.
How does that make sense? Help me out.
It's chargebacks for their full-time work, because they were dedicated to DCFS. So, we commanded their full-time employment.
So, you're getting paid through the state for them? Is that what you're saying?
No.
You're a county agency, he's a county sheriff. Why is there a charge?
I can't speak to that.
Who do I speak to?
Shouldn't have sat down. So, it's in the same way that we pay for the PSOs that sit at our doors, those PSOs, we pay for those as well. We pay for public works staff that are the custodians in our building, and we pay for the, when public works does repairs in our building. So, anytime there's a county employee that is otherwise working in our building, if we can, we pay for them. And under certain circumstances, we can try to find the ability for reimbursement. But in this case, those staff, they're not working on child welfare cases, per se, that you could tie that, their time with that child to a specific reimbursement code. And when that happens, we have to pick up the entirety of the cost.
You see where I'm coming from?
Tell me more, please.
Well, I mean, county agency, county sheriff, and I got a reduction in costs to the county sheriff, to the county agency for services from the county sheriff to that agency. I find that odd. Do we, you wouldn't know this, but we had sheriff deputies in the courthouse. Was that being charged back? I'll bet not. Why are you special?
I think as our budget showed, almost all costs that are being provided, I'm sorry, all services being provided in our building are charged to us. That's just the structure of how we do chargebacks.
Okay. Maybe we need to restructure that, and I think we might have found a few shekels here for some people. Thank you.
Councilman Swinney, Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Hi, Jackie.
Good afternoon.
I just want to thank my colleagues for their questions. It's answered some of the ones that I had. Just a light reflection, when I first started here, didn't really have the breadth of the heaviness of what you deal with. And through the director and to the eight leadership folks that are in this room, you say it's not fun, right, the budget? You say it's not fun, the day-to-day, I say it's not fun, day-to-day work. But there is some reward here. And each one of you work so hard to get the successes that you have. So, it's just a little reflection I have. But I have one question, you don't have to answer it now, but it's important to me to figure out as we go through this process. What was the process to determine these reductions, and who was involved in the decision-making process for the final version of this budget? I kind of want to dig deep into that and figure out how the decisions were made, so I can add my input.
Great.
Thank you.
I can definitely follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I speak to that? I'll just share, I was asked to work with the Office of Budget and Management. We sat down with them, they shared what our base budget was. And then, they shared that they wanted to work with us to find reductions. I asked each department to come back with reductions and to tell me what they thought, you know, they could, in essence, do without during this biennial budget. And then, that information was shared with our fiscal office, and then we worked together to go through what the impact of those changes are. Every one of the budget presentations that you'll see today, as well as those seen next week, the directors were involved in building their budgets. They were given opportunity for feedback. There were times, there were some adjustments that, you know, frankly, the directors proposed to me that I was uncomfortable with. I still presented them, because these are my directors. We are a team, we work together. And if they feel this is something, a change they can live with, then I'm going to represent that. There are others that I felt like, listen, this is too, this is too deep, this is too hard. Let's try to find another reduction. So, I would say this budget that you see in front of you was built by the department directors with me, with the administration, with OBM, and together, this is our budget.
And thank you, and I appreciate that process that you went through as a director and your team. But I'm curious about the conversation you had, you and the administration, with the other directors putting this final budget. So, we'll talk about that more. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize the President.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And to Director, I'd like to follow up on Councilwoman Simon's question about the child protection team. And in the discussions that I've had with Canopy, they've said that their costs have increased, they've completed staffing, their demand is not going down, and therefore, they cannot operate in '20, '26, and '27 at the same level that they did in 2025, at the same funding level, without there being significant reductions in the breadth of their service and how many people they can serve. And my question is, is whether you've had a chance to evaluate that concern and whether you think that Canopy can operate effectively on the amount that's budgeted here.
Through the chair, thank you for the question, President. We really started to look at, again, this partnership in terms of, we recently just started working through their deliverables, as well as some outcomes, to evaluate where they are and how they're operating, what those expenses are going to. So, looking very deeply at the invoices that are coming over and what the operational landscape is for the entire Canopy Child Advocacy Center, not just right now. This is a partnership that's supporting child protection teams, not the full operation. So, we wanted to make sure we're looking at that. But we've just started to dig into some of the metrics that they've sent over, so that we can do some of that evaluation. We haven't seen, again, the spending for the last two years. So, that is really what this budget was based upon, is all of those underspends over the past two years. So, I hope that answers the question. We're working on the evaluation piece currently.
So, I would conclude from that, that that evaluation is ongoing, and that you don't have a definitive answer at this time as to whether the budgeted number is adequate.
Well, correct. I mean, it's really based on spending, and it's based on the spending that's been reported, based on the referrals that we've sent over and the contacts and outcomes for those particular deliverables. So, we're looking at that evaluation now. One, just to make sure we're all on the same page with the expected deliverables, as well as the outcomes. Again, looking at the landscape from a DCFS perspective, our numbers continue to go down. Not necessarily demand, I will definitely agree to that in terms of the young people and the families we're engaging. However, we're also looking at if the expectations or outcomes have changed in terms of the landscape. Let's make sure we're pivoting to address those needs. But we're looking at that now, and that will be ongoing.
Thank you.
That point, Madam Chairwoman, just very specifically?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you. Just with the Canopy, about two months ago, or maybe six weeks ago, they came before the HHS committee, and I had the privilege of being part of that. And they asked for an extension on these dollars. And they explained very well why they were doing it, and the money was going to be caught up, and everything that they've asked, were asked to do was going to be done in that window. So, just the more due diligence on, they weren't hiding it. They were saying, we're doing good, this is what we want, and we're going to complete what we agreed to. And they were going to ask for an extension of time. And when we left that, then the budget came, and then we started getting into this. So, I just wanted, for that point, I just wanted to share that, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you.
And thank you. We continue to partner. I'm hoping that that relationship continues to grow and build. And so, again, we're encouraged about what we're seeing through our partnership. And so, we'll do the work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Simon?
Just quickly, as a follow-up to Councilman Swinney's question about the process and discussions you had regarding how you would present a budget in this trying time, were you given a directive about a certain percentage that needed to be cut across the board?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman from District 8?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you share with us what the percentages are for each of these seven reductions? Are any of them actual eliminations? And if they're not eliminations, what percentage of each one of their budgets does this represent?
So, I don't have the percentages through the chair, but what I can say, we have not eliminated any of our partnerships. We continue to partner and prayerfully strive through all of these changes. Again, not fun, just right-sizing some, and others, just really looking at deliverables. And so, again, we'll continue to partner with all of our nonprofits, as well as our sheriffs, to make sure we're delivering solid, quality, timely, and child-focused care.
So, for Say Yes, how much remains in their budget? If $400,000 is being reduced for 2026?
So, I believe, let me look at my, so, the Say Yes College Now allocation was 1.6. And so, with the reduction of $400,000 for next year, that'll take that to 1.2. And then, $1 million for '27.
Can you do that for each one of them? Canopy?
I can. I'll get that to you. Oh, do you want it now?
If you can do it now, just to get a sense.
So, for Canopy, that allocation was 1.8. And so, with that reduction of $500,000 for '26, that'll take it for both years, '26 and '27, to 1.3. For the Family Center Supports, that is 2.3. We reduced that by 1.15. And again, that's what we've been leaving on the table. So, we right-sized that particular contract. And then, with the Neighborhood Collabs, we're looking at 4.9, a little over 4.9 million. And the reduction there is 1.2 for each of the '26 and '27. And so, with the Boarding Care, just so you guys know, the Boarding Care and the Out-of-Home Care, I believe that was budgeted at 61.5 in '24, so last year, and 74 million for '25. So, you can see the 2 million reduction for '26 out of that 74 million this year, as well as five additional, 5 million for '27.
Jackie, I appreciate it. And it is, these are hard cuts. I look at each one of these, from our Neighborhood Collabs, who always ask to do more with less. And I could go back and defend each one of these, but it's tough. Like I said, it's tough. But thank you for that information. But thank you for that information.
Thank you for the questions.
Director Fletcher, I have a quick question. Are we seeing cost savings or improved outcomes from our investment in the Hope Campus?
So thank you, Madam Chair, for the question. In terms of cost savings, we're still looking at that because, again, part of the challenge was when kids were sleeping in the building, there was no cost, right? There was cost to our staff, our mental health, our physical health, and all of that. And so, again, we're working through that, but improvements, yes. We've served, I believe, 65, maybe a little bit more, unique kids were placed at the campus this year, and that's 65 kids that would have spent the night or more in our office building, so there's a savings right there.
What are your thoughts around cost savings as it relates to out-of-state placements?
So that is tremendously challenging. When I spoke to our kids with the most complex needs, those are the young folks that we're seeing that are typically placed, when there's a placement setting available to meet their complex needs, often appear out-of-state. And again, we're working with our state partners, as well as Ohio Rise, as more residential and congregant care settings, which, you know, we're not advocating for necessarily, but as those settings come online in the state, we can bring more of our young people back home so that we can get them back with their families quicker. But that is always a tough thing if that child needs that particular level of care, and there's nothing in the state. We have to make sure that kid's needs is, is met. So we'll continue to monitor that, though.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Vice Chair?
Through the chair, to the Director. Going back to the subsidy reductions for Tapestry System of Care, I know this has been a program that gets funded by the state, and then it gets funded by us back and forth. So you, you stated to Councilman Jones that that budget is 2.3, and it's going to be reduced 1.15. Is the state picking up any, any part of this funding?
So through the chair, through Councilwoman, I'll, I'll tell you, that particular contract, I believe there's 11 providers on that master contract, and all but one bill Medicaid. So Medicaid is picking up a big portion of those services that are being delivered through that particular line item. So again, that's where some of the underspending is coming from, because a lot of the programming and services are being built to Medicaid.
Okay, so this is underspending amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Director? There are no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to Director Gowen. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Vice President, members of council. I am Kevin Gowen, Drive for Job and Family Services, pardon me, for Cuyahoga County, and I'm here to present, although I hope I can control the remote here, on the, thank you, the Job and Family Services budget for '26, '27. A brief overview of our budget and the services we provide. Our funding is a combination of federal, state, and levy dollars. The services that we provide go to our most vulnerable citizens, the primary programs, and the programs are all federal in nature. They are SNAP, or Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, formerly known as food stamps, the Medicaid program, TANF, which includes cash, funding of childcare, and our PRC, or Prevention and Retention Contingency Program. And through these programs, we serve over 400,000 county residents. In 2025, we had additional resources added in order to staff up. We had some struggles in the wake of the pandemic, and we bolstered our frontline staffing by 20%. And I have to stress that it was frontline staffing we were bolstering. Our performance improved significantly as a result. This is simply a snapshot of our contact center over the past 13 months, up through September of '25. And beginning in February, really, we start to see a reduction in wait times. The blue line in front of you is the wait times on our contact center. I should pause for a second. The contact center is the primary means by which we communicate with our clients. And we saw a significant reduction, only a 70% reduction in overall wait times, and a significant increase in the percentage of calls that we can answer. We were able to maintain that, dropped significantly from February, March, and into April, and we're able to maintain that level of performance throughout the year so far, and we hope to continue to do so. Just a quick look at our budget. You can see we have our levy funds, the special revenue fund, which essentially is looking at the state and federal money that comes in. And our primary expense is our salaries for our staff, our personnel expenses. Our contract money that we do have, you see under the, under the other expenses, pardon me, contracts are largely federally funded, not exclusively, but largely federally funded, and most of our budget goes to the salary of our staff on the running of the programs. I do want to talk about the challenges that we are facing in '26, '27. I think most of you are aware, I know I've briefed some of you before, in the past four months regarding the changes that are coming. There are several, and David Merriman, Director David Merriman, mentioned them at the start of his presentation. These are federal changes. They come about as a result of House Resolution 1, also known as the One Big Beautiful Rule Act. And I'm going to start with one that has already actually happened. Non-citizens, many non-citizens legally, legally living in the United States will lose access to SNAP and Medicaid. They are losing access to SNAP as of the end of this month. We received short notice on when this was being implemented. I was informed on October 9th it has been implemented. It was actually run as a cleanup, I will say, in the Ohio benefits system, that's a statewide-run system. And 4,200 Cuyahoga County residents were notified that their benefits end on October 31st. For Medicaid, a similar, actually, the exact same process is going to occur, but that will occur in October 1st of 2026. The next major change with regards to our program are work requirements. For SNAP, there are already work requirements for SNAP for those deemed able-bodied adults without dependents, but it is capped at age, from age 18 to age 54. That is expanding to age 64 in 2026. And, actually, I should apologize, let me apologize. The, that will expand, it was supposed to begin on November 1st of '25. But I want to, so this gives me a moment to stress something else that's happening. The rules that I am speaking to right now at the federal level have not been written yet. The normal procedures, once legislation is passed, the governing bodies for the federal government, in SNAP's case, it's FNS, in Medicaid, it's CMS, will write the rules for which the states have to comply with those regulations. Those have not been written yet, so we're a little fuzzy on, especially for the SNAP program, we're a little fuzzy on when implementation will occur. But right now, the state is projecting that the major expansion for work requirements will occur actually now in February of '26. It will also include, in addition to increasing the age up to age 64, it will include parents with dependent children ages 14 and up. None of those populations right now are work required, and the work population within Cuyahoga County right now is roughly 3,000 individuals. Under SNAP, it will increase likely to close to 25,000 individuals. For Medicaid, there will be the introduction of work requirements. This is not expansion, this is new. There were not work requirements prior in the Medicaid program. It is for the expansion population, however, which refers to those who are now eligible for Medicaid as a result of the Affordable, of the Affordable Care Act. Number's about 98,000 people in Cuyahoga County. Then this population, as part of that legislation, will also be subject to shorter certification periods. Right now, when someone is certified for Medicaid, they're certified for a year. The expansion population will be, will be required to recertify every six months. They'll be on a shorter certification period. I cannot give you the effective date of that, other than to say that the legislation states it must be in place by December 31st of next year, 2026. We are also facing some funding challenges. So there are two, from, from two different lenses, from two different angles, pardon me. Federal financial participation in the SNAP program is being reduced by half. When I say federal financial participation, I'm referring to program administration. Traditionally, not traditionally, historically, the federal government has covered 50% of the cost of running the program. They will now reduce that to 25% of the cost of running the program. For Cuyahoga County alone, that represents a minimum of a $7 million annual loss in operating funds. In addition to that, there is now what is known as a benefit allocation cost share. And for the first time in program history, SNAP benefits will not be 100% or have the potential to not be 100% federal money. Anyone who receives SNAP now is receiving that $500 in SNAP is $500 in federal money. Beginning in 2026, October of 20, pardon me, October of 2027, the state can be responsible from 0% to 15% of that, and it depends on statewide error rate. The higher the error rate, the higher that goes. Using 2024 as a benchmark, just for reference points, the state issued $3.2 billion in SNAP in Ohio. Had the penalty been in place, had that 0% to 15% been in place, the statewide error rate would have required that the state pay $320 million. Had they been higher, it would have been $480 million. We only have one reduction that we're proposing for 2026, '27, re-elimination of part-time positions. These are frontline customer service individuals who are working part-time, and we're reducing, which is an overall budget reduction of about $440,000. Questions?
All right, thank you, Director. Can you tell us how these layoffs will impact the call time at the call center?
An estimate on the, what, regarding the contact center, I apologize.
How these, how these cuts, how these layoffs? Will laying off part-time staff impact the call time?
Oh.
In the call center?
The, the intention is to have full-time staff on there. We have other full-time staff, we're the same position, just not part-time, and we believe we can fill that gap, yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Simon and Vice President?
Just a follow-up to the chair's question. What is the impact? Do you anticipate on letting go of the part-time workers on the call center lines?
The impact in terms of performance?
Yes, I mean, we've reduced that time significantly, and I think, my concern, I think my colleague as well, is will that be impacted?
So what we've, what we have found is that our, our part-time staff, four hours a day, have, have an impact, but we know that we can rediver, we have, customer service aide is the, is the position, and we have people that we can put into that role. And we've also found that our part-time staff work generally from about 10 to 2, a little bit of variation around that, and the best, the significant majority of our calls come in first thing in the morning. And so by having full-time staff on in the morning calls, and making sure we resource that appropriately, and make sure that we're filling vacancies, I do believe we can cover that. The customer service line, for that first line, what we've referred to as Tier 1 of customer service, receives about 42% of our overall calls, so it is significant, it's close to 1,000 a day, but we will be able to resource with other customer service aides.
Okay. Do you think the call time is going to go up, though? The wait?
I do not think the wait will go up, no.
Okay.
Councilman President?
Yes. What's the effective date of the reduction in, in federal participation and administrative costs from 50% to 20%?
That is October 1st of '26.
First of the year?
October 1st of 2026, yes.
Okay, a year from now, okay. do we know whether or not the, the state will cover any of that difference?
So the state, when they wrote their budget and passed their budget in June of this year, did not address that initially. It was just before the House Resolution 1 was passed. They are aware that it needs to be, I've talked with the State Department of Job and Family Services, they understand that a budget adjustment is likely necessary. We hope that they cover that gap in federal funding, but that answer hasn't come yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Schlepper?
Good afternoon, through the chair. Thank you for being here. Listening to some of this is incredible. You know, but I was just doing a little bit of math here, so your team serves about 400,000 residents, so when I look at that versus the county population overall, it's 33% of our overall population that you serve, which means that a third of our county falls into this incredibly vulnerable group.
That is correct.
Which is a staggering number to me. I think that speaks to just the climate of our region in general, which I think is quite sad. So the $7 million annual loss in operating funds, again, not to make the picture more bleak, but I guess qualitatively, can you kind of give me an overview of how you think that will impact your division broadly? I don't need specific numbers, but can you just kind of maybe tell a little bit of a story of what that's going to do to your team and, and the services that you provide?
So there has been adjustment in levy to try and counter some of that. You can see it in our budget. We are hoping that the state steps up. What I want to stress to everybody with regards to, with regards to both the budget, the projected shortfall, and the, the challenges facing us that are occurring because of the federal changes, is there is a tremendous amount of unknown out there. There is, I found myself unfortunately confidently saying, confidently saying to many people, I don't know. I don't know when some of this stuff is going to be effective, I don't have a realistic idea of how many people will be impacted. But I do have concerns around our ability to continue to provide services. I do, however, we have been looking at automation. We've continued to refine the contact center. It now has, we've tried to eliminate actually the need to use the customer service line. When someone calls us for a SNAP phone call, which I would like to, I would like to point out that 60, roughly two-thirds of our phone calls are in fact SNAP-related. If you have an interview with us, if you have a scheduled reason to talk to us, it's recognized by the phone queue, it doesn't have to go through a frontline person, a person, we actually, when you call and you enter your, your identifying information, it says, are you calling because of your appointment? And it's sent into that queue, so eliminating the need for staff on the front end to handle that call. We're going to continue to refine that and look at more ways to do that. We're also looking at using automated techniques to improve the efficiency of our team, and be able to review more calls using automation, and better coach our team as well. We'll continue to do that, but we do have concerns that, given the additional work that work requirements will require, and yes, the reduction in federal participation will impact, we may see longer, especially initially, when the work requirements truly are launched in February, we may see longer wait times.
Councilman Gallagher?
If you could, and you probably don't, don't have it, but could you give me the numbers for the Medicaid enrollment and SNAP enrollment for '20, '21, and '22?
I apologize, my hearing's kind of bad.
Oh, I'm sorry, me too. Medicaid and SNAP enrollments for 2020, 2021, 2022? If you could get that.
For '21 and '22? For '21 and '22?
2021, '22.
Yes, I can get that.
I don't expect you to have that.
I got to write it down so I can remember.
Now, are you, real quick, are you anticipating AI in our world starting next year?
I wasn't being very specific when I mentioned automation, that AI is part of that plan. In order to attack the error rate and drive our... Which I am proud to say that our agency has driven our error rate down in Cuyahoga County specifically every year for the past five years. But we are going to use, we've already begun the process of building AI tools to review literally all the calls that come in on our SNAP lines, because that's where the error rate is being looked at. First be able to transcribe them and then analyze it for errors using a standard QA form. The federal government and the state government use a standard format to determine if the interview was done correctly. We're going to apply that to our calls.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Just curiosity, what does error rate mean? What's happening when you say error? When you say error rate, what does that mean? What's happening?
Certainly. And I apologize, I'm going to have to get into the weeds a little bit. The error rate refers to whether or not the individual, someone who receives SNAP, whether or not they received the correct amount. If anyone is issued over or under the correct amount, it's an error. The threshold is now $58. It moved up a dollar from last year. It was $57 last year. But it's $58. So just by easy way of example, if someone was supposed to receive $500 in SNAP and they received $559, that's an error. The error can be either an agency error or it could be a client error for neglecting or forgetting to add a piece of information that would have affected the case. I can tell you that statewide, 9.01% was the error rate for 2024. But I also like to stress, despite the fact that we are able to back into an error rate for Cuyahoga County, the error rate is judged statewide and done so by the state's audit team reviewing 1,022 cases per year to determine whether or not the correct amount was issued.
Thank you.
Director Gowan? Can you clarify whether undocumented individuals are currently eligible or are receiving any county administered benefits like SNAP or Medicaid?
For, you're talking about undocumented non-citizens? So you know, only legal citizens, pardon me, legal non-citizens are eligible for benefits now. There's much more restrictions on that, really starting in November 1st. But anyone illegally in the country is not eligible for benefits, no.
So to be clear...
Yes.
Undocumented residents receiving benefits, it's almost nonexistent?
It should be nonexistent, yes. The only exception to that is in emergency situations where the hospital is being reimbursed.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Counselor, did you ask them, was that inclusive of SNAP?
Restate the question.
Was that what you just asked the director? I apologize, my mind, it went somewhere else. Was that the same as Medicaid? Was that Medicaid and SNAP benefits for?
For non-citizens?
Yes.
So for non-citizens, the changes to SNAP occur on November 1st. They've already expedited process, but they occur November 1st. And for Medicaid, it is October 1 of next year.
Okay. And so is it true that about 5,000 roughly have been impacted for SNAP benefits thus far?
4,200 were removed on, well, effective October 31st. We have another 500 to review manually this month, next month, pardon me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. Sure.
I just want to speak to one matter that Director Gowan mentioned in terms of the layoff of the employees. I just want to, one, recognize that we have union leadership in the room. Out of respect for that collective bargaining agreement, I don't want to get too deep into the mechanics of the agreement. I do want to acknowledge the intent would be to offer those employees full-time employment. So it's not a layoff and a termination, but an offer for them to join us on the call center that would enable us to, you know, beef up the operations. It becomes a choice of employment or the position doesn't exist. I say that knowing that the union's here, this is a proposal, and until counsel acts on the recommendation and the proposal, it's not something we're going to begin negotiations on. So I do want to make that point clear, though.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, Director.
And there are existing vacancies as well. So they would be closing some of the existing vacancies as well. Thanks.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear from the Office of Child Support Services, Director Tiffany Dobbins-Brayleton. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council president, vice president, entire council body. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you on behalf of the Office of Child Support Services. All right, this is a little fancy, so I do hope I know what I'm doing.
The large green button.
Thank you. There we go. Okay, appreciate it. Okay. So the Office of Child Support Services, or OCSS, is funded through the Title IVD mandated match dollars at a 66% rate. We also receive medical incentives, administrative fees, which is program income, and HHS levy service dollars. This assist... Oh, I'm sorry. The Office of OCSS budget expenditures include five cooperative agreements, which our partners are Domestic Relations Court, Juvenile Court Division Magistrates, Juvenile Court Clerk's Office, Cashiers at Juvenile Court, and Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office. And this helps us in assisting with the services we provide in establishing paternity, support orders, collection of support, and parent location services. Here's a snapshot of the budget and the recommended budget for 2026 and '27, which is at $38,437,020 for '26, and then '27, $38,906,155. And that is with staffing levels at 238 persons, FTEs. At this time, we do not have any new initiatives or increased expenditures planned, and our contracts were reduced in this budget cycle by 1.3 million, which represents 95% of the contracts that are paid to other county general funded agencies. An additional $1 million in levy dollars will be needed to meet the mandated local That's a quick snapshot, but that is pretty direct of what it is. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and at this time, I will open it up to any questions for me.
Vice President?
Through the chair to Director. Okay, so contracts on one entity are being reduced by 1.3, but you're saying the proposed ask is an additional $1 million in levy dollars. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. Through the chair to the councilwoman. It's not an ask that I have of this body, but it is $1 million that we would have to find in order to offset the match that we will receive. If you need more detail about that, I do have our fiscal officer here to explain that, but...
Yeah, we'd like to know what the mandated...
Okay, I'll call Rich Wyler.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Richard Wyler. I'm a budget person for child support. I will just tell you in big picture, big dollar terms. Basically, we have a $38 million budget, okay? From that budget, what we have to do is we have to deduct program income, okay? After we deduct the program income, then that is considered net income, from which we get 66% back in federal dollars, okay? So our budget of 38 million, we have approximately $4 million in federal incentives, and we have $4 million in fees that we collect. So if you deduct $8 million from our 38 million budget, we have about $30 million that is considered net expenditures, for which we get $20 million back from the federal government, and we have to provide local funds of $10 million. Of that local funds, $3 million is given to us by the state of Ohio. So we have to come up with $7 million basically in local or levy dollars, okay? For which we have, in our budget, $5.9 million, okay? So there's about a million-dollar difference. The problem is, is if we don't match that $10 million, we don't get the $20 million, okay? If we only had $9 million, we could only get $18 million back from the federal government. So if we don't provide that money, it's considered like a mandated amount, local share. So that's, does that pretty much describe what you'd like to know?
Yes, it does. Just to further on that point, so we've always been doing, this is something that we've always been mandated to do with this additional...
That is correct.
Has it always been at this level and this amount?
It's always been the same percentage, yes.
It's always been the same percentage.
In prior history, going back a ways, in 2008, in going back, the federal incentive dollars used to be considered local money, okay? And so that helped out, and we didn't really need levy subsidy way back then, because our expenses were much less, okay? So prior to 2008, we had very little levy dollars needed. However, the federal government changed the rules in 2008 and said now that is not considered, that's going to be considered program income and no longer going to be considered local share.
So through the chair to Rich. In 2009, we were adding the subsidy at that point?
I believe so, yes. We still had a large cash balance at that point in time, because we had built up a large cash balance, but, so we may not have actually got levy subsidy in 2009.
Okay. So have we in any way tried to get any grant funding, or are we able to get any grant funding from other sources to help us with that levy match? Or it will just always be something that we have to use our levy dollars for?
It's always going to be something you're going to need levy dollars for.
We participate in grants, but it's not, because we're Title IVD, it's not something we can necessarily get reimbursement directly that way.
Thank you for the understanding. Thank you.
Councilman Simon?
Thank you so much. The question I have is about the cooperative agreements with the five divisions, the courts and the prosecutor. Are we mandated to have these contracts?
No, we are not mandated, but it provides, any money that we get back from these agreements, for the most part, is paid into those agencies, prosecutor's office, to offset their cost. So it saves the county money. If we did not have these agreements in place, then we would not get that money back from the federal government.
I see.
So in essence, $4.8 million this year in the prosecutor's budget or contract, we would not get two-thirds of that back.
So the question I have, for example, is, for example, in the cashier's office at Juvenile Court, they're collecting child support payments? Is that why they're a contract in a contract?
Yes, that's true.
And what about the clerk's office? They're filing, accepting filings of child support motions?
They're doing filings from the magistrates that are considered IVD filings.
And if we, could we direct the funds in different ways and still receive the match? For example, if we're not going to provide revenue to the clerk's office or have a contract with them, in Juvenile Court, I understand they would have to pick up that slack, but we could use that, reallocate those dollars someplace else and get a match that's acceptable?
No.
No?
I don't know. I don't know how we could, you know, right now, okay, the contract is for $532,000 for the current year. So whatever those bills are, we get two-thirds of that money back from the federal government. So we have to have a cooperative agreement to get the money back from the federal government.
We could only, perhaps only have an agreement with four entities and increase the spend? Or, all right, I'll ask it a different time, but I don't, we could have a contract with Juvenile Court cashier that might be for more dollars, right? Versus giving money to, having a contract with all five? There's a pot of 500,000. We could give 500,000 to four of these contracting partners, right? We're not forced to have a contract with the prosecutor's office.
No, we're not forced to, but why would we not reimburse someone that we need their services for?
I'm not asking you that. I understand why. I'm just asking, are these dollars flexible?
Yes, contracts are changed every year.
Okay.
Every month.
Okay.
So Madam Chair Director, am I correct that the budget as presented includes the $1 million in additional share, mandated share that's needed?
Do you understand the question?
No, it doesn't. At this time, the Office of Budget Management has given us 5.9 million in our budget, and we feel that we may need the additional million dollars to meet the mandated share.
Okay.
It's made mention, I'm sorry, through the chair to the councilman. It's made mention in here just because we were asked about, you know, any challenges or anything like that. And so we will look for that, but again, we're not asking this body to give us a million dollars.
So if you're not asking for that additional money, where are you expecting to get it?
I'm sorry. Good.
I would say that, you know, we can look forward through other HHS cuts or, but, you know, we may need that additional funding if our expenditures do meet the $38 million.
Okay. The other question I had is that the mid-year forecast is for $41,800,000 with a staff count of 233, and the recommended budget is 38 and a half and 38, almost 39 million in '26 and '27. So it's less money by 3 million, but the staff count is five higher than in 2025. How is that possible?
Unfortunately, that is something I cannot answer.
We can answer part of that. In this current year, there was a retro payout of $1.1 million approximately for our contract with the union staff. It was retroactive. And it should have been, you know, if it got, it should have probably been paid out in '24, but was carried over into the beginning of '25. So that counts for $1.1 million. The rest of it is, there's a vacancy credit in our budget of $1.7 million, which accounts for the majority of the difference.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you again. Oh, at this time, I would like to bring forward...
I'll bring her, okay, perfect. Director Petracola, if you could come forward. We'll now hear from the Division of Senior and Adult Services.
Sorry, we're going to have the Fatherhood Initiative presented this time. I think they were up next. I think the thought was that they would do a separate presentation from child support.
That's per the presentation.
Good afternoon, council members.
Director Grimes, hello.
Hi. Hi. To the council president, council vice president, and Madam Turner, thanks for hearing from me today. I'm going to just give you a brief update on the budget, our staff count, and our funding source. But I just want to start out by saying, you know, our mission is to strengthen families in Cuyahoga County by encouraging fathers to play more active... in Cuyahoga County by encouraging fathers to play a more active role in nourishing and raising their children. We have four goals. One is to promote the importance of fathers being involved in their children's lives. The second thing is to make sure that when fathers come to the county for services, they're treating the father-friendly manner to say we're as moms. The third thing we do is refund programs to help both, meet both the financial needs and the emotional needs of their children. Because we know, you can be there all day buying the new Jordans and things of that nature, but sometimes, you know, you have to be there emotionally. And the flip side of that is you can be there all day emotionally, but children have to eat. So we fund a range of programs. And finally, we celebrate healthy father-child relationships by having an annual fatherhood conference. We've had 19 fatherhood conferences every year. It's sold out, it's a great event. So our budget is approximately $1.1 million. We have three, three staff members and the funding comes from HHS levy fund. What we're looking at in 2026 and 2027 is a cut of $80,000 in contract services. That's 10% of our fatherhood contract services. That's the line item that's being impacted the next couple of years. You know, what the impact of that is going to be, you know, it's going to be a reduction in services among all 11, 11 programs. We're looking at equally spreading the costs among all 11 services. The other part of the budget is going to be, is going to be affected is we wanted to fund our annual fatherhood conference internally, but with these budget cuts, we'll have, we won't be able to fund it internally, we'll have to go out and get private funding again for the 20th Annual Fatherhood Conference. So that's kind of a summary of, of what we do. The reason we do it, we know that fathers involved, children are less likely to live in poverty, less likely to drop out of school, less likely to become teen parents. All the research says that when both parents are involved, children live a more positive and productive life. We serve about 5,400 fathers through our 11 funded programs. We have an annual fatherhood conference, we have 500 fathers attend that. We just finished our 19th Annual Fathers Walk to School. We had 208 schools and 26,000 fathers participate, so we are having a positive impact on the community. And I'll answer any questions.
Through the chair, to Director Grimes, you stated that you're only reducing 11 providers across, evenly across contractual agreements. How does that then turn into also the annual fatherhood conference?
The conferences, the conferences, we contracted the fatherhood conference with an outside entity, so that's separate than the 11 programs. We have 11 programs that are part of our fatherhood contract line item and the fatherhood conference is a separate line item. We were going to this year fund the fatherhood conference internally, and now we won't be able to do that, we'll do it externally again, as we've done in the past, through organizations like the Cleveland Foundation, has given us money in the past, Dollar Bank has given us money in the past, CareSource has given us money in the past.
So to my understanding, in my conversations, I was never made privy that this would include cuts to the conference, just the providers and a reduction, you know, percentage-wise, so they, you know, we wouldn't be able to, wouldn't have to get rid of any. So if you could provide, now, now I'm learning that this is also going to impact a pivotal year of our fatherhood conference. So if you could please send the clerk, the different providers that you have, that in the past have helped the county with putting on the fatherhood conference? Because I, I take it from what you just stated, it's always been outside entities or?
Correct.
Okay.
And those are, those are, I'm sorry, but those, those are the same providers that we go through again this year for, for funding the conference. We go back to the Cleveland Foundation, who's been funding the conference the last year. Dollar Bank has been funding the conference for the last six years. CareSource has been funding the conference for the last two years. One of the things we wanted to try to do internally is because of their funding cycle, a lot of times, the money comes in for them, but in terms of trying to get it in the county budget in time, receiving them from outside entities, it always runs up again, time shortage in doing the contracts and those kind of things.
So we, basically what you've been doing is, the department has been fronting the money and then they get reimbursed, so?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
So I don't understand why that can't still occur.
It can, it can and it will.
So we're going to have a 20th Annual Fatherhood Conference?
Yes, make, make a long story short, if the providers continue to fund, if they've, if they've done in the past, we will have 20th, 20th Annual Fatherhood Conference, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Gallagher?
Thank you for being here. As you know, I've been a long critic of this program, not for its need, it certainly needed, but I couldn't figure out when we first started where this came from. Do you know where it came from?
Where it came from, but, yes.
A long time back.
I'm sorry, yes, I know, I knew exactly where it came from. When the ex-commissioner, Peter Lawson Jones, was a member of the state legislator, he actually, legislatively, they created the Ohio Commission on Fatherhood. And so when he came to the county, he brought that same zest about providing a fatherhood initiative within Cuyahoga County. Because we know, like I said before, in Cuyahoga County, 40%, and sometimes we think this is a narrow scope, 44% of the children in Cuyahoga County are growing up in separate parent households. We know the impact it is when fathers aren't involved. We also know the impact it is when both parents are involved in regularly raising their children, the positive impacts it has. So therein is what, why we've start, why we initially started in doing that. And we've been doing it the last 20 years. We think we're one of the best-practiced organizations in the, in the country. A lot of different counties have copied what we do and have been successful as well.
Who are those counties? Because when, and again, I'm going back 15 years. I called around, actually it started in DC, it was federal, it was federal dollars. And believe it or not, it was the Republicans in Congress that pushed it through to run dollars through the states for them to be incentivized to do this, which I think is, is the thing that we've been missing. When fathers aren't in the house, trouble starts, or at least in the child's life. You don't necessarily have to be in the house, ideally in the house would be great, but it is what it is. So I called around. And, and when I say called around, I mean, I was calling cities and counties and the only one I could get the answer to the phone that knew what I was talking about was Detroit. I called their county first, I called Detroit. And I got ahold of a guy, I'm like, how's your fatherhood initiative going? And he started laughing, he goes, it didn't work. I'm like, you know why it didn't work? And we, we had a bit of a conversation. But I never knew how it got here. I knew Jones did it and brought it from the state through the feds. My concern, not my concern, but the new thing on the horizon for us, in the wisdom of our friends in Columbus, they've set aside $10 million for fatherhood initiatives. That would be a great place to go scrounge up some dollars, but we're not going to get them if they see this budget.
Well, the fact of the matter is, when the Ohio Commission on Fatherhood, when they do the funding, what they're, what, what, one of the qualifying factors of their funding is, is they're looking for multi-county funding. So obviously, we don't qualify that because we're in one, one, one county. And we've gone, we've, we've gone through that with them a couple of different times. One of the things they'll look at is, they'll say, listen, we, we got three different little counties over here, we want to fund three different counties. And obviously, we say to them, well, our county is larger than those three combined, but they stick with the guidelines of what they're trying to do.
So we, so we don't qualify for that 10?
No, because of the fact, because of the fact that they have that restriction that it has to be multi-county. And we helped refund them, as a matter of fact. The Ohio Commission on Fatherhood was, in, in statute, was defunct of money. So county, I mean, the county commissioners, myself and a group from around the state, went back, went to when Governor Strickland, we were on his transition committee, and we told him, listen, we need to reinstate that money. And the fact of the matter is, even after that, they've determined that it has to be a multi-county request.
Well, they get us again, I guess, down there in Columbus. How do I know this is working?
Well, last year, out of, out of the 5,400 fathers, we had 240 that graduated, went through our job training replacement program, 150 of those have jobs. We had 1,000 fathers go through our Boot Camp New Dads program. All those fathers now, not only know how to handle child safety, but they know about safe sleep to combat infant mortality. I got a call three weeks ago from a lawyer in Cuyahoga Heights that said, Al, I want to thank you for helping save my daughter's life. Because I went through a Boot Camp New Dads program, they taught, they told me the difference between dislodging something that a child, in a child's throat, the difference between doing that when it's a toddler and doing that when it's an infant. He had an infant, a girl that was four years old, girl was four years old, she swallowed a peach and a peach seed, started choking because she had gone to our, our Boot Camp New Dads, he knew the maneuver to dislodge it. So the fact of the matter that we saved a life in that particular case is one of the reasons why we do what we, why we do what we do. And obviously, we look at the family structure within Cuyahoga County today, and it's all about the kids. It's about how we make left better for the kids. And like I said, all the things, all the research, research nationally and locally indicates that when both parents are involved, whether they're living in the house or not, they live a more positive and productive life. So all we're doing is encrypting fathers, even if you're not living in the house, on, you know, how to be a better parent in parenting, parenting the kids. I could go, I mean, our supervisors.
Right, we, we can have you.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm scrounging for dollars, as you can maybe imagine.
And I appreciate it.
And I'll be continuing to do that with everybody. But I always thought, and not my call, but I always thought that this program really should be at Metro, run by Metro, because we, what's the first thing a father's going to do? Be at the birth of his child. And those are the guys that you're going to be able to grab and save because they're at the birth of their child.
And that's what we do through the Boot Camp New Dads program, which is at nine hospitals.
Which is why I think it should be at Metro, but that's for another day. Thank you very much, I appreciate your answers.
You're welcome.
Council, Castleberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Grimes, thank you for being here today. I did want to clear one thing, follow up on Councilman Conwell. So you said there will not be a factor on the annual, annual conference, correct?
No.
You will, just the funding source, it's rather than being internally funded, the outside groups will be funding that. So I just wanted to make sure, kind of lost it a little bit in there, but one, one more question through the chair. So seeing this, I mean, it seems as a modest reduction in the, but no reduction's good. So what is, what do you think is the biggest negative impact will have on your group and the work that you're trying to accomplish?
Well, like I indicated, you know, I'm spreading the decrease throughout the program so that it, it minimizes the impact that it have, has on all programs. For example, I just talked about supervisory visitation program. One of the impacts their minor deject would have, they may have one last day that they'll be open for supervised visits for fathers and their children. So across the board, it's going to have, you know, some damage to programming, but, but fortunately, you know, this is the world we live in and we do the best that we can do with the funds that we have.
Understood. Thank you for, I just, like I said, I just wanted to see what your day-to-day and what you thought would be the, one of the bigger impacts, but appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Awesome.
Through the chair. Director Grimes, share how your department really assists with DCFS.
Yes, oh, for sure. Department Children Family Services, they get case plans, all right? When they get a case plan, let's say a child is, get child is removed from the home, and then they go to DCFS. And they're going to look at the structure that the child came from and who was involved in the child's life at that point in time. If it comes from a two-parent, two-parent household, they may call me for some parenting classes for the father in the event that they are in a case plan that they have to become, they have to go to parenting classes or something before they can get the child back. More importantly, a lot of times, the thing about parenting when it comes to DCFS, if a child is removed from the biological mother's house, right, you would indicate that you would, you would expect that the first person that they would place the child would be the biological father, right? And sometimes that's the case, sometimes they don't immediately place the child with the biological father because the biological father needs some assistance before they can move him into his house to get him out of the system's care. So we get referrals, we get referrals from DCFS all the time about children who've been placed in the system and now where's the best place to fit, to fit them. You know, if it's the biological father, does he have a good job? That, how does he make the adjustment? It's now, can he now get childcare? Because I'm working all day now, I've got the child in my house, can I immediately get childcare? So they call our office, we refer them to different organizations in the county to assist them, now that they're, the biological part, I mean, the custodial parent as opposed to the, as opposed to the non-custodial parent. So there's a referral system.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to say this because the councilwoman took my time, but, but no, appreciate that.
Reclaiming my time.
But first, I wanted to say that Fatherhood Initiative was, at least here locally, was brought forward by Councilwoman Conwell's husband, Kevin Conwell. It was here locally and certainly Peter Lawson Jones and others, they were able to, you know, at larger scale here at the county. But you have done excellent work to be applauded. Over the 15 years I've been here in office, there is no cloud over what you do. I measure your work in life and death, and it just goes so underappreciated, what you do. I have buried too many children who were, who were obviously victims of infant mortality and that literally, that literally has parents sitting on their front row, where one may have rolled over on a child. And, and to see that type of dynamic sitting on the front row of a funeral, you know, a stoic parent and one crying and with grief and guilt and these type of things. And these are the type of things you eliminate when, when you're helping fathers and educating them. I have seen individuals who were, where someone died in a fatality in the little handoff of a child from one parent to, to another. And you help navigate those safe transitions for families that have that type of tension between them. So I've seen families where I say, man, I wish they had known, you know, why are they doing this by themselves when if I could get, you know, Al to help them navigate the successful transfer of a child from one parent to another just for visitation, those type of things. So what you do is critical, it goes underappreciated, and it's important work. And to that, my one question to you is, how does this impact your advertising budget? Because the idea of people knowing this, who have a need in real time, knowing that you're available as an option, I, I see your advertising as, as critical dollars.
Yeah, and we've done the same thing. It's a, it's a, it'd be a 10%, well, it'll be proportional to the percentage of our overall budget that they currently have.
So advertising on radio, what are you doing?
Relatively minor, it's relatively, it relatively might decrease. But that, that particular case, it might be more like 7% or 8% because that was the percentage of the total budget.
Any further questions? Let's see, where am I?
Let's see, where am I? Director Grimes. I wanted to thank you and your team for seemingly always doing more with less. Not a flex. But thank you.
Thank you.
You and your team have continued to serve families under very difficult circumstances and that doesn't go unnoticed. I've been rocking with you since my Sheriff Brown days. Please know that we won't abandon you in this work and we see the value of what you're doing. As is our goal to support every department that has been here today and voiced their concerns about their needs. So we will, you know, I know I promised to continue to work with not only you, but everyone here. So is there anything else that you want to share with us?
No, I just want to thank Council for the continued support over the years.
You're welcome. Thank you for your service. Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from Department of Senior and Adult Services. Director Petracola.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Vice President, Council Body. Thank you today for hearing about DSAS's proposed budget for the '26, '27 calendar years. It's only fitting, I think, that Director Fletcher began this discussion about our budgets and she helps the most vulnerable, as far as the youngest of our citizens in Cuyahoga County. And the Division of Senior and Adult Services is the opposite end of the spectrum. We are the ones who protect those that are vulnerable as they age and that are disabled adults. So our budget is pretty simplistic, not to say the least. But here is an example of our past budgets, starting back to 2023, 2024, what we are spending currently at 2025, and the proposed recommended executive budget for 2026 and 2027. As you can see, there is a reduction in the budget from this actual spending of this year. A lot of that will be impacted by the contracts for the different agencies and the programs that we work with, and I'll talk more about that in the next slide. Overall, compared to some other agencies, you might think that this is less of a hit as far as financially, but you have to remember that we're at a point now in this county, we are 30% by 2030, age 60 and older. So we are at that point where we've tipped. There are more people growing older, and I guess that is a blessing because each one of us are sitting here aging as I speak. And there are more older individuals in our county right now than there are those under the age of 18. So here's more of an explanation of where some of these cuts are coming from. So as you can see, there was proposed cuts to...
Excuse me, Director.
Sure.
Let me go back to the previous slide. The numbers for '26 and '27 are very much different between what's on the screen and what's on the handout. Handout has the HHS levy fund at only $22,428,000 for '26. It had the executive budget at $27,619 total, as opposed to $28,253 on the screen. Could you explain to us?
Yeah, I think I delivered a file earlier with inaccurate numbers. I think the numbers are, the correct numbers are on the screen. So we will amend the presentation and share it back with all council members.
Would you like me to read that number off? Council President Miller, for the '26 and '27, so that you have the accurate number?
So I think we have it in front of us on our screen, you're saying?
Yes.
You're saying that the numbers on the screen are correct?
That is true.
Could you explain why the special revenue fund is showing up for the first time as a funding source?
So it has not been for the first time. This has been continuously over the past years. What happened was, our 2024 numbers reflected $3.9 million of the Healthy Aging Grant. That was a one-time award provided by the Ohio Department of Aging, and it went directly to senior servicing agencies. So what happened was, there was a little bit discrepancy because the numbers originally provided included that $3.9 million in 2024, which threw everything else off. So for the sake of trying to make sure that things were accurate, those were removed to avoid some confusion until the accurate numbers could be given. The proposal that Director Merriman says is the correct PowerPoint will actually have all those numbers, Councilman Miller. So I apologize for that.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions about this? Again, I'm sorry, you guys have the wrong presentation. Or at least numbers for DSAS. Okay, go ahead.
There are no more questions? All right, Director.
Thank you. On this next slide, it shows where some of the proposed cuts will occur. So our community social service programs, we currently have 32 providers. The 2025 budget is listed there, and you'll see that there is a difference in the '26 and '27 budget, respectively. There was a decrease of $200,000. $150,000 was taken from Cleveland Clergy Alliance, and then an additional $50,000 was made in cuts. This was an RFP year for us, so we released the RFP earlier this year. We went through the entire process of looking at the proposals, and then we selected the vendors. There were originally 36 vendors. Out of the 36, there were two that did not continue. They were not vendors who agreed to participate with the RFP process this year. That was University Settlement in Bedford Heights. There was a third one, the Greater Cleveland Neighborhood Centers Association, which merged with the Rose Centers. And then we had another two providers who decided that they did not want to continue to participate. But because they went through the formal RFP process, we did award them funding. So what had happened is we pulled back some of the funding and we redistributed it amongst the other providers. That was prior to us knowing that these cuts were coming. So in essence, what happened was, some of the providers were originally given more funding, and then we took back some of the additional funding. So there were 14 people impacted by that $200,000 that was proposed to be cut in 2026. And then there will be an additional $50,000 in cuts made in 2027. And that's just for the community social service programs. Then if we move on to the options program, there are 23 providers. Next year will be our contract RFP year. We had a gap year, so we didn't want to have all these proposals done at the same time. So we spaced out options in the CSSP between a year. As you can see there, the original budget that we had in 2025 was $5.2 million. What happened was, though, we were provided generously another $800,000 from another HHS agency, another $100,000 from money that was found that could be utilized by our agency. And then we had our building lease in 1801. The $486,000 was placed in our budget. And as all of you are aware, we are not moving into 1801 at the current time. We are moving into the Hughes Building until 1801 project is ready to receive. DSAS is our new home. We will be vacating November 14th, Mount Pleasant, and we will be at the Hughes Building starting November 17th. So that additional, the money that you're seeing there, the $6,586,951, that incorporates those additional funding streams that were provided to options so that we did not have to make any cuts to meals and we could continue our laundry service that we provide older adults. Laundry service is important because there's not enough homemaking available and there's not enough personal care. And one of the things that a lot of older adults struggle with is getting in and out of old housing stock basements to do their laundry. So we preemptively thought of a service that could assist them with trying to ensure their safety and also getting some help in the home because personal care does also include and homemaking laundry service. And then, as you can see, the budget for 2026 is set at $5,150,000. And then there'll be an additional $50,000 taken in the 2027 budget for our option contract providers. Again, like I said, this money runs through 2026, and then we will do our RFP in the spring as well and then re-release that for our services that we provide through options, which is home-delivered meals, medical transportation, personal care and homemaking through home health aids that we partner with throughout different community agencies. We also have emergency response. We have the laundry service, and we have a small contract for some durable medical equipment such as grab bars, toileting chairs, and things of that nature. Our bedbug program, we have $150,000 still allocated to those contracts. $90,000 is with one provider, $60,000 is with the other provider. And then we have an authorized strength of 175 FTEs. Currently at the agency, there's 166 employees at DSAS. Questions?
President Miller.
So, Madam Chair, Director, thanks for all that you do. I know the needs are out there, the senior population is growing, the number of people with extensive needs is continually expanding. So you're in a difficult situation of trying to serve with limited resources, and that's obvious. My question is, I know that options were struggling to meet the needs at the 2025 number. When you reduce it down to $5,150,000, what things are gonna get changed or reduced to get you down to that number?
So we'll probably have to do a managed enrollment. So through attrition, add a client to the options program when a client falls off the program. We'll probably have to revisit the amount of meals that older adults will receive per week. So there might be some adjustment made there.
What's the current number of meals?
Oh, geez. I would have to double check. I do have that number because we had to go through this. I want to state that the majority of our clients receive five meals per week. So they receive one per day. And when we were looking originally before we received the additional funding, there was a smaller group that was impacted that received either 10 meals, so two meals a day, or they were receiving 14 meals. But that's a very small group of that. I think it was under 100, but I'd have to double check, and I can definitely give you those numbers.
So would you reduce the number of meals to less than one per day?
We would probably, yes. So, but we would ensure that at least somebody had at least five meals per week, one per day. And then we would look at other possibilities of trying to hook them up with a food bank in their area, getting any other resources connected to them to kind of supplement that. We've also found, believe it or not, that a lot of our older adult clients do ask for less meals. They don't like to be, they prefer to ensure that they're not wasteful. And some have reported just changing an appetite. We have other clients that we do definitely get linked to some of our senior centers because the senior centers do provide congregate meals, which is an excellent opportunity for older adults to not only receive a meal, but to socialize. And we've learned through the pandemic that one of the most detrimental things that happened to people, especially older adults, was the social isolation. So we're hoping that we have more of those connections and bridging some of those gaps with our community centers, with any kind of food pantries. And then we do have a very small food pantry on site that if one of the workers was to go out and they noticed that the client was struggling with food because of a certain predicament in a particular time, we do take them some food as well to try and get them through to whatever the next, you know, solution might be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Kelly.
Madam Chair. So the communities that have their meals on wheels, is that funded by the county? Or is, how are they funded?
We have specific people that we fund. We fund specifically through the CSSP program, certain senior centers. So that is for some of the congregate meals and some of the home-delivered meals. So there is a mix there. But there's a lot of also cities that don't rely on the county for those home-delivered meals. They might refer to a different program like Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, for example. They have some funding that they provide to some of those partners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair.
Through the chair, to the director, did you mention transportation? How that was gonna be impacted?
Currently, we're okay with the medical transportation. But with some of the community social service programs, some of the senior centers do utilize that funding for transportation to and from the senior center. So there might be some small impact. We try to make sure that we really space this out. We didn't have one particular agency take the bulk of this. So, you know, we have cuts where we did give some of those raises. Like I had stated, we had at least six or four people drop out from the CSSP contracts, and we had provided those dollars to these agencies. We, in essence, kind of took some of it back, unfortunately.
Further questions for Director Petracola?
All right, thank you.
Hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Through the chair, to the director, I know you mentioned the bedbug program as I was coming in. How are we, I know, I don't think it required any additional funding. How are we with the smoke detectors that were for the visionally and hearing impaired?
We haven't done that program for some time now, yes. Since the last time you proposed it, actually.
Okay, so we don't have any in stock or anything like that?
We, everything that we did have a few years back when you had provided us some resources for that has been definitely extinguished, pardon the pun.
Was it just not a need, or did it require any funding?
I think it was twofold. It was a funding thing, and then it was finding people to install them properly. And that was the other thing that was difficult to coordinate. But we were able to secure homes for the ones that we were providing. I believe they were smoke detectors and also carbon monoxide detectors. So those all found homes. But we haven't had that for quite some time. And I think that was probably, was it pre-pandemic? Yeah, it was about 2018, 2019.
Do you remember what the cost was?
I do not.
You can send that to me. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. I wanted to ask you about the Cleveland Clergy Alliance contract that you brought up. You said it's being cut by 150?
Yes.
Okay, what was the original contract amount?
$150,000.
So that this is, it's being eliminated?
Yes.
Thank you. I think we have no further questions for the director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any miscellaneous business? We meet again Tuesday, October 28th, at 1 o'clock. We'll hear from the Adams Board, Office of Homelessness, Early Childhood, Invest in Children, and the Office of Reentry. I'm gonna thank all the presenters and staff today for their thoughtful discussion and... for their thoughtful discussion and for the work that you continue to do on behalf of Cuyahoga County residents. This meeting is adjourned.